With the planning board to order. We have a public hearing tonight. Okay, it's a continuation of a public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing. A motion to.
So don't, don't say.
Give me a second. All of them favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll start off by introducing the board. On my right is Anthony Kinnahan. My media right is James Noys. On my left is Jerry Stetson. Recording secretary is Donna Carter. And our town planner is Tracy Aldrich, sitting over on this side. And I'm Hugh Hurley, the chairman. I recognize a lot of faces, so I won't go through the whole thing. It'll kind of run the same way. The proponents engineer will have an opportunity to make a presentation. They'll have some questions, and then we'll open it up to the public. I ask that any time if you want to speak, that you introduce yourself. Even if you might want to be speak several times, because Donna is very busily keeping minutes, and she doesn't have eyes in the back of her head. And so, just out of courtesy, that's all I'm asking. With that being said, Chris.
Where's the best place to set up?
Probably over there. Make sure everybody can see it. I got my plan in front of me. We received the reply from PGB Engineering regarding his concerns with it. And we'll go through those. For the most part, I believe they've all been pretty much addressed. There's a couple of questions we have on them, but we'll go through them to make sure that we think we got it right, and we'll come to all of it.
Would you state your name for the record again? Do all that again?
Yep.
So again, Chris Manver with Civil Environment Consultants, representing my client, Jack Peters, for proposed five lot residential subdivision. Edit property located at one and nine Spring Street. As Mr. Hurley said, we received comments from the peer reviewer, addressed all those comments. Additionally, addressed comments that were received from members before at the last public hearing. And that is the plan you see before you. Not too much has changed in the way of the plans. Would you like me to just go through all the comments?
Uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So some of the comments were more relevant to the last layout, which showed a road diagonal with a fifty-foot no touch, so the plan has since been revised, as you guys have seen and members of the acting team. So the comment regarding sheet C two hundred for lot one, you can clarify, lot note with the area as thirty-five, six-five-eight, and looks like the areas were different. That's been addressed with this new layouts. Just kind of show that. Comment on lot one, which used to be here, has now been revised. Lot three didn't meet the required one-hundredy feet of frontage. That was just a kind of a typo on the last one. That has since been revised on that lot there. The typical roadway cross section, the bank rank gravel and the process gravel, of course, we've reversed. That has been revised as well. Also, additional note was added to the plan stating that the process gravel shall conform to the section M one oh two zero from the Massaw Highway Division standard specs for the local subdivision rigs. There was a comment about the amount of fill being required for the projects, so a cut and fill analysis was performed for the sites. And included in his response comments, I believe, a peer reviewer made a quick calculation for number of truck trips that would be required. That's kind of just the nature of what it is, based on what is required. That also goes in tandem with the type of fill material. I believe there's a note on sheet two for, I can't remember what the note says, but it's about the fill material specs on that.
Would you state what he has here for the numbers, just so that it gets into the record?
Yep. What, Mr. Ralph, any response to this?
Yeah. Well, I believe, or in here it's calculated to be seven thousand two hundred sixty cubic yards.
Yep. So that's, again, his comment or response, I guess, assuming a typical sandbag dump truck, load of about twenty cubic yards, there would be about three hundred sixty truckloads of fill required. Again, that was also just for the roadway construction. The lots were not taken into account for that. So four, a little bit over four and a half of high retaining wall. Did you guys receive the structural drawings for those?
Yes, yes, we did.
Okay. That was done by a previous engineer. That did the other retaining wall back in, I believe, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
And I believe he wanted, okay.
I don't think, yeah, he saw, when we submitted these comments, I don't think we had the structural designs yet.
Okay, and should the board approve the project? We recommend a condition requirement submission of training wall design to the building department. Because of the height of it, it's actually eschewing through the building department versus our approval, because it's, what it's, somewhere, it's over four feet high.
Yep.
Require engineering design and approval, so that will be one of the conditions that we put on here that it could through it.
Comment six was about requirements with guardrail. I believe Mr. Noys had the comment about replacing the wind guardrail with the more sturdy steel guardrails. So we replaced any colanders related to wind guardrails to be steel guardrails, and in accordance with D O T specs. Comment about the guardrail being placed along the two-to-one slope, which I am proposing that, along the, the embankment. C three hundred. So the two, I said, is about.
Which sheet is that, please?
Uh, C three hundred.
Three hundred.
So I believe the requirements anywhere where this is greater than a four-to-one slope, so along the, I don't remember what station it is, but along the area where the two-to-one slope is proposed, along the area in front of the proposed infiltration basin, and along the blading lot line for forty-eight harvest foot drive as well.
Did you have your ease and sheet, which one is there? Yeah, I got it. You don't have an easement for that.
The guardrails in, I believe, in four to.
No, but for the slope, should it need to be addressed in the future? I'm thinking we should have a slope easement to encompass that area, just in case for any reason. I know it's, you had a, with the soil volume, they also did a thing on the structural integrity of it. But I'm just thinking normally, when we have slopes, it may need to be maintained sometime, have an easement, so.
Yeah, certainly possible.
Is, do you mind while, once you're done, talk, I want to talk about that slope too while you're.
Is that going to be, it's an unbuildable lot. Is that going to be a piece of land being held separately?
Yeah, so the reason for that was based on, I believe, obviously you cannot fit a buildable house lot there, so that lacked the adequate, well, quite frankly, frontage in the upland area required. That was the nature of that. I know in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen Jacob's fiscal plan, obviously, these lots were configured in such a manner where you didn't have like that parcel there, but because of, it's kind of just kind of a dead piece of property, based on the amount of wetlands that are on the site, so.
So what's going to happen to it?
Essentially, nothing. It's not a buildable lot, kind of like, if we're cut too many.
But I'm sure Mr. Peters isn't going to want to pay taxes on it for the rest of his life. So, and, so it basically can't be used. Would you connect it, split it between four and five?
I believe.
Or would you?
The requirement, if we did that, essentially, if you just split it right between kind of the middle there, I believe the amount of area or upland area that was required, did not adhere to the zoning by law, whatever it called. So I didn't.
Well, all you need is the upland area. You've already got the upland area. If you have more, you have all the wetland area you want.
I believe it was ninety, for myself, like ninety percent. So if I divide that.
It's over thirty thousand square foot, not of the total.
Okay, so that's a cool caveat.
Thirty thousand square foot lot is the zoning requirement.
Yep.
So it's based on that. You could have, you have a hundred acres out there.
Okay, so it's just ninety percent of the third of that.
Yes. Or the other alternative could be, seeing as the town of West Bridgewater, the Conservation Commission owned the adjacent land, what goes out to Spring Street and back, you could gift it to them.
Yeah. I know Mr. Peters has a turning point, but I think that's, you know, turning away the matter.
You can do either, either one. I was just looking at what's going to happen with this. You should have something, whether you keep it and pay taxes, you gift it to the town, or you split it, I don't care. But probably should, at this time, or before we're done, know what you're going to do.
Yeah, that was my thought when I read the bylaw. It was increasing, obviously, the area, but now I increased the upland area on the site by, you know, a decent amount. So I took that as, okay, you need at least ninety percent, okay.
No, it'd be, that'd be a catch twenty-two, you know. Okay, Mr. Noys, you want to?
No, I was just, just because we were talking about that area too, and I was reading the slope stability, and I agree that there was a lot of it about maintenance and making sure that, you know, that the slope doesn't fail or maintain the slope. And I think at two-to-one, I'd probably prefer going with rip rap instead of having it seeded. You know, and that, that would be easier, I think, in the long term too, because if there's any failure with a rip rap, they can just take the backhoe and pull it back up on the slope.
Or the power, the trouble with it.
Yeah, yeah, rather than trying to, you know, if it's low and c, then you gotta, you know, go down there and seed it and everything else, so.
Then also in tandem with the easement, how do you look?
It probably should.
It'd still need the easement.
I think an easement, because eventually, something's going to go in there, and if one of the homeowners, if both of them, if they own it, they get upset, they, you can't fix it, whereas you've got an easement.
Yep.
It can be addressed.
Yep.
And speaking of easements too, we were talking at the very end, since the wall is supporting the roadway, there should be probably a wall easement behind there too. Again, the same thing, the wall fails, the town's going to have to go in behind, in that case there, they'd have to go behind the wall. It's so big, they couldn't really do anything on the road. So I would suggest maybe having a ten-foot easement out from the wall, but also a ten-foot easement so that they can drive in and access the wall that way, so maybe.
Ten foot on the backside of the wall?
Yeah, have a ten-foot easement along the backside of the wall, so if they have to bring in anything, any equipment there, they got the ten-foot easement. But also give them a strip so that they can go from the road, not over the wall, like the side of the wall to their back.
Okay, yeah, essentially from like the edge of the right-of-way town.
Yeah, just so they can access it.
Yep.
Yeah, because anytime, like, you know, something like that, the wall's holding up the road, it's the responsibility of the town. Versus the other way around, if it was holding up a property, that's property owners.
Okay. Okay. Okay, number eight.
Rate, yep. The regulation four three one requires sidewalks terminated within eighty-eight compliant ramp up to the pavement. A ramp is shown at Spring Street, end of the proposed sidewalk went out to cul-de-sac end. The plans have been revised and show the eighty-eight compliant ramp at the cul-de-sac end. Additionally, detail is also added. Yep, so adding just the note saying that eighty-eight compliant ramp at the, pretty much the driveway end. Obviously, these lots are subject to completely change where driveway location's household prints, but it's subject to terminally at the driveway location. Additionally.
Okay, hold that thought for a minute. I guess I didn't notice it before, but wouldn't it be better if we continued it to the next driveway? Because that way, anybody coming out of that house on lot two, they're going to have to walk in the street before they get down to the sidewalk. If you brought it up and terminated at their driveway. So you've got it terminating at the driveway to number lot three. If you brought it up to, to the end, and terminated at the driveway, that way that it'll be a sidewalk in front of everybody's house. They may have to, one, they'll have to cross the street, but everybody else will have a sidewalk in front of it.
Yeah, fairly certain that's the way it was on the previous twenty seventeen plan, just terminating at their thick. Again, that makes complete sense, which.
I think we had so many things going on there. Both when I was, I was going through, looking at this, it jumped right out at me. You know, it's just another fifty feet.
Yep.
Okay.
And again, for a comment, I think, from a member James Noys, was adding a crosswalk and eighty-eight compliant ramp on the other end of, on the west end side of Spring Street. Which makes sense, you have schools there, it's more safe that way. So showing a pro sidewalk with a new eighty-eight compliant ramp on the west side of Spring Comment nine was, I promise to take all the detail about adding the max cross slope, should be no greater than one inch, one quarter inch per foot. That's been revised on the detail. Comment ten regarding sidewalks to separate from the trapway by planting strip by a minimum of two feet. Had the conversation with actually Patrick Brennan. So we had an additional waiver on the cover sheet for that purpose.
Okay, for that. But also, he recommended, because it is there, that you have on your cross section, you have a height of between four to six inches, and he's saying that it should be changed to be six inches, or a minimum of six inches. So we need to change the.
We're eliminating the drag strip, right?
We're eliminating the drag strip, yeah. That just makes sure that they, they got a full six inches there.
Yep. Comment.
Should that, I don't know what we've done before, the sulfur heding back it with concrete?
Yes.
Typically?
Yes.
Yeah, because right now it just shows in the front.
It's possibly, the curving is, needs concrete behind it as well as in front.
Is that what the, the detail, that does not show that?
It doesn't show, no. It's just got it in the front.
Exact same detail from Jacob's fiscal plan. So I, yeah, you could.
We told them the same thing.
Oh, you did? Yeah.
Could be one. Because if the first timer, a truck hits that, great.
So what was the comment? The concrete back end?
Yeah, to add concrete.
It doesn't have to be the whole length, but it has to be a foot on either side of where there's a joint.
Yep.
You know, it just basically keeps the ends from coming in. But most of the guy could do it, it's just as easy for the concrete, try to just drive up, and they just dump it.
Loose mix.
Comment was eleven was trees to be planted where necessary, the chairman of the town's forestry department, which I believe is Tim Hay.
Yeah.
So, he sent us a memo, kind of a letter, via email, about, you know, the type of trees, and send the whole.
Put the whole thing on the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
So I add, you know, again, it's more subject to like his final approval from patients of the types, so kind of work with him on whatever he would prefer.
Yep.
One thing to do with that and any plantings on the sites.
Yep.
It should be deer resistant.
Is Tim aware of that?
I think he is.
I don't know whether he said that.
But we have quite a few deer in town that have ruined the landscape.
Okay. Yeah. Then comment four should the board approve the subdivision, recommend condition requiring the road along with stormwater, sewer, terrain, private perpetuity. Again, that's a comment that's been brought in, which I would prefer with that.
Wait a minute.
I have a question.
Between you on, well, you go ahead.
Yeah, it, the plan still should be submitted for as-built slash street acceptance, because the people who live on the street.
Yep.
Have the option of petitioning the town for street acceptance, even if it's, because Mr. Peters isn't going to own it when he sells all the houses. The people in the houses are going to own the sun line of the street as a homeowners association. But if they petition and want it to be brought in, we need the plan built for street acceptance. It's in our.
It's in our program, our program as-built.
It's as-built for the construction wise and the street acceptance. I believe it's one plan now, right?
Yes.
Now we're doing one plan instead of two? So it's just one plan that shows, in case the town, it ever goes to town meeting, we need the street.
Okay, even adding the condition, okay, perpetually, it's like, can you add?
Yeah, let me speak to that. We want the roads to be accepted, because we've got a couple of instances where we have private roads that we have problems. And we, anybody that lives on a street in town, they should be on a public street and have the same rights as everybody else. You're still going to need a homeowners association agreement, because you have the comment septic system, and it's going to probably cover some other things in there when you prepare that. So you are going to need that, because the town is not going to touch that. But as far as the roadway, I definitely think that, yes, it should all be accepted, and it's got to be made, that's why it was being made, to a condition that it can be accepted, so it should be accepted. I'm not sure why he came up with that. We do have, it's a column one lot subdivisions, where somebody can put a road in to get some frontage, and those remain in private perpetuity, because they are basically a glorified driveway that satisfies the condition of the subdivision control act of providing access and getting the frontage that is required by the zoning. But this isn't the case with yours, so we really don't want to see the word perpetuity on here, anyway. But we do want to see a homeowners agreement, which I'm sure Board of Health is going to have to approve as far as that goes, and for anything, anything else that you may have covered by the homeowners agreement. But we want the roads to be in a condition and a format so they can be required, accepted.
Since you want roadway acceptance for them, and typically that wouldn't be required, or just a kind of a recommendation? Like, obviously, if this is going to be public right of way, then yes, for the right of way.
No, it's a, it's an as-built and street acceptance plan together. We've got a, we've got a package we can give you with that. It's, it's nothing, nothing out of the ordinary.
Yep.
It's a couple of certifications on there, and some notes to cover the, some for the registry and some for the lawyers that we believe.
And some of the never required, it's always been a roadway, it's always fine, you know, make sure it's in the form of the kind of, you know.
Yeah, we call that the as-built.
Yeah, yeah.
But then the other one, if you talk to Tracy, she, we've got it well printed out now on how it is. It's just, it was kind of put more in writing a couple of years ago.
It's been, some comments on stormwater, requiring, I think it was four inches of moly sand on the bottom side as opposed to six. We revised that as an easy fix. Drain adjustments for the culvert from lot one to five, that was a comment from, on the original layout. The other comment they had was, I believe, adding twenty-foot wide easements. So the easement, I believe, was fifteen feet wide previously, now it's twenty feet wide. I think that's just going along lot five is what it is. Yeah, lot five, so that easement is now twenty feet wide, before it was fifteen. Comments, they had comments on the post-develop, post-development maintenance. Those sections got changed. I think it was relating to proprietary treatment units. I think it said subsurface infiltration basin, which is a typo. Then it was a comment about mowing the basin, I think he wanted it changed to monthly, so that got changed. Spoke with the water company, the email, they recommended the age water main, so.
Okay, where is that shown on the plans?
Yeah, the water main.
Yeah.
The profile sheet, it should be C six hundred.
Okay, because on your, your cross section on C eight hundred, it doesn't, it doesn't give.
No, it does not give, anyway, but yeah, it is eighty-five water.
Okay, so it should be added to the, to the cross section?
Yeah.
Okay, number five, you're.
Yep, Board of Health, so we just.
So you're, you're why dealing with that?
Yep, submitted, revised, I think we got comments back about a month, two months ago. Just submitted, revised plans back to Board of Health, and you just got forward to it, as peer reviewer went over. Seemed minimal, I don't think it's going to affect this layout, anything.
Just for curiosity, how is it, are you going to be pumping everything down to the cul-de-sac, and then pumping it back?
Yeah, everything's gravity down to the pump station down at the cul-de-sac, and then it's pumped up from the pump station to the cul-de-sac, it's within an easement, and it's pumped up the three blocks, I think, second base.
And each house is going to have their own tank?
Yep.
So the force main, actually is going to be in the same trench as the, as the gravity?
I don't believe it is.
Well.
I know as the gravity.
I'm looking at the, on the profile sheet. Let me look at that.
I think, yeah, one is, it's, the force main is at least better than the depth of four feet. I know the sewer is a minimal of seven, so the force main will be above that. So that's a good foundation.
Okay, no, okay, you're showing it off to one side, but you don't have the distance. Okay.
No, I think it is, essentially, if it's, you know, I know it should be a separate, that distance of about three feet.
Okay. No, I was just looking at the plan view.
Yep.
And, okay, maybe, there was a sidebar, sidebar, okay. Just a question for Sarah. Okay, thank you.
Number six, yeah, I think he just had a comment saying the stormwater design appears against regulations. Then there's other comments that were, that I addressed that were raised by members of the board. One was the.
Okay, so that is being reviewed by the Conservation Commission, which is the strongest.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm still waiting on that. Yeah, I spoke with Patrick Brennan about it.
And the same, same engineer reviews it for the Conservation Commission as us, so that is being addressed to them, not through us.
Yep. Now you want the comments received from. They want the comments received from the planning board, you want that part? You already want the, uh, the comments I, I got approved by the members of the board, on that section?
Yeah.
Oh, you're reading his, uh, oh, you're reading his comment.
Sure, I do.
So I also have, you know, like.
That's number six, okay.
There are also a lot of comments that, you know, some members of the board raised, uh, which was the lack of, um, topo, um, within, I think, the northern part of the site. Um, so yeah, right in the, um, eastern part of the site, we added some supplemental wide arc topo. They've confirmed, uh, stormwater flows, make sure that wasn't, you know, I believe Mr. Lewis brought that up.
Okay, you, you brought it to the property line. Does it, how, how, how wide is this piece of, of what line is here?
Um, honestly, I don't, I, we didn't, it was never flagged on the other, on the side of it.
I, I know, in, in parts of it, it's, uh, it's fairly abrupt.
Yeah.
Because it, it used to be a ridge down here that, that the farmer, the builder, developer, they took, took it out. He had the, he had dump trucks in the gravel business and took it out.
It was a supplemental wide arc topo added in the back, you know, the, um, the cul-de-sac retaining, well, there's confirmed, um, confirmed drainage patterns. Um, yeah, one of the borders at thirty, uh, the border thirty-two harvest wood brought up, um, question regarding the slope. That's the reason why the slope stability analysis was done. Um, I think Mr. Stetson brought up the regulation of section three, three, four, and four, two, six, five. Um, grabbing soil sampling and material subbase and again, again, additional approval, that, you know, the applicants clearly going to write there to those sections. Um.
Which is, is, is something we, uh, we, we're quite interested in when it's a lot of filthy and dry.
Yeah.
And we, we've had a couple of other cases and just keeping an eye on it and making sure that everything is, it should be removed is before, before the, uh, the final roadway, uh, material is brought in. As far as the filling on the lots, that's a, another, another thing. Uh, we're looking at the streets, so there definitely will be a condition that it'll be, be viewed.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, I think Mr. Stetson noted about, about seeing tax lines to be paid, brought that up to the applicant, he is aware of that situation, um, taking care of it. I think that Mr. Stetson brought up some of the fire alarm box, uh, made a comment regarding thinking that new construction fire is supposed to be sprinkled. I hope that's correct. Um, I spoke with the fire chief about that, um, I was told it needs to be sprinkled, he said, um, and yeah, fire alarm box is not needed.
Okay, so the chief did say.
Yeah.
He, he wasn't interested in it?
Yeah, wasn't interested in that, I spoke to him also, um, one of the other comments.
But we, we had, uh, a few years ago, we had a, a couple of subdivisions that were built in, uh, off of Walnut Street, which is in the, uh, either's northwest corner, right up against the Draken, near the Draken line. And the, the response time is, is very, very slow, takes about fifteen minutes to get up there, so. And, and the developer agreed to put him, put him in, which he did put, put it in, and, uh, and so. It'd be a, you know, it's, it's a good thing if, as long as they work, like we get sprinklers.
Did someone make that comment about how far it was? Did someone make that comment?
No, well, no, that's why, that, that was, that was the initial, uh, reason for it because of the, uh. Tony, how long does it take you to get home from here?
Fifteen minutes.
Yeah, and he lives, and he lives right on the eastern line, right up in that area, so. So it was, uh, whereas he had the, uh, well, you can almost see, you can see the fire station, it just, the leaves on it.
Yeah.
Looking down the street, so it's, okay.
Then there's a question about, uh, the location of the hydrants, um, kind of, I think Mr. Lewis brought that up. So then I also spoke with, um, the fire chief about that as well. Uh, it may not be shown, it might be shown, I'm already in the silly plan, but we had one at the, um, where the true line slope is and at the very end of the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac between lot two and lot three, or, um, comments.
Where is?
I think you, I thought you go to the, the sheet before that one. You should need to issue.
Okay, there's one.
One, then right at the, the bank.
Okay, and so right along the lot line, that's good.
Yeah, we have, have to remove that.
Okay.
They're all spaced out, we can take five hundred feet of each other. We, that, is it?
Okay, the grass, which we already talked about, and, and the, the way we're on the bounds, which is something we've been doing, doing, uh, right up by the lines, how to even get to the granite bounds now. Okay, is, uh, do any of the board members have any, any further questions?
No.
Okay, uh, this is a public hearing. Does anybody in the public have anything, any concerns, anything new? Okay, yes, sir.
Uh, Matt Jones, sixty-four Spring Street. Um, I haven't heard it discussed in any of the board meetings so far, but I just didn't know if any consideration was being given to the path that those construction vehicles. I, I heard you correctly, you said three hundred and sixty.
Yeah.
Heavy vehicles and those, that's ten wheels?
Uh, yeah, I think it was a twenty, two, twenty cubic yard dump truck.
So forty-ton, uh, excuse me, fourteen-ton vehicles, three hundred and sixty fourteen-ton vehicles will be going down. So my concern is the path that they're going to take through a school zone that, and through a commercial vehicle exclusion zone, which Howard Street is, and I believe Spring Street is. Um, so I just wanted to note that on record that I have concern with that.
Yeah, no, yeah, I, I understand your concern, but to get to it, that's the only way they, they can.
Well, really, they would have to do harvestwood. Because Howard Street is truck, Spring Street isn't.
Nobody enforces it. I know, but yeah, I actually.
We'll bring back Tuck.
Yeah, I know. Actually, what, what Mr. Stetson just said, actually, the easier way probably would be to, to do harvestwood, come right off of, of, on North Main Street, harvestwood, and then just look around the corner. But that's, that's something to, uh, to, to work out. And I certainly understand your concern with, with, uh, the school because of, at eight o'clock and two o'clock, it's, it's a zoo there. Eva, yes?
Um, daughter default forty-four harvestwood. Um, the dirt that you're bringing in and use trucks, where does that come from?
That's one of the weird things we were concerned with, that it is, uh, we don't want to see any junk fill, garbage fill. Because sometimes that's what, what does come in. Anything brought in, that should, it has to be a clean.
Screened, grout.
Not so big, pure and grout, we don't want to see, we don't want to see recourse to too good stuff and junk.
So who checks on that?
I'm.
Who checks on that?
We, we have, one of our members checks and, uh, Mr. Brennan, the engineer, will be doing soil tests to verify that that's, that's what it is.
It has to be brought in, it's in, in certain levels, in compacted, and then we usually keep an eye, you know, as it's being done. So it's not like they come in and dump four feet. They gotta do it like, I think it's twelve-inch.
Right.
Levels, so it's compacted.
Do we have, I, I, because I don't know on the construction end, do we have them submit a source of materials before they bring it in?
We have.
Okay, so I think that's what we want to do.
Most, most, most everything around here comes from Bridgewood Radiance.
Yeah.
Or Placeopen Hall. Another company, or they're done in a month or two.
So we can just make that one of our conditions?
Yeah.
Okay.
It has to be tested as well?
It has to be cleaned, screened.
It, it has to be.
And if it's coming out of a plant.
Yep.
They're basically saying it is.
Yep, and is that the buck stops there? Or is there like, you know, I mean, I've been on like, you know, the project, but like, hey, the, the condition being, I had material samples, or, you know, I think that might be one of the requirements. If that material sample is taken for the materials placed, just to make sure it's a clean, and you think, or it means these X amount of specs.
Yeah, the, the, the contractor will have to, uh, notify the engineer.
Yep.
And, and the planning board agent that will be doing it so that it can be, and at that time will determine just what it is and checking out.
I believe there are material specs that I have on sheet two.
All right.
Those were lifted directly from the previous comments that, I mean, you guys didn't have the same peer review in there, uh, for me, yeah?
No.
So that comment was about the, 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 uh, type of material still that was being brought on, um, and that specifically.
We, we've had a couple times now, when it was less than to the, desirable, so we're trying to jump right on. Uh. Do you remember which, which one?
Yeah, right, right now, I'm the bottom mill, they, uh, right above you, right there, yeah.
There they are, yeah, okay. Yes, yes.
I have one more question for you. As far as the, um, uh, people who have septic tanks in their, on their property, but then everything is now going to be pumped down to some kind of a pump station, like closer to Spring Street. Why is that? Why are people getting leaching fields along with their septic tanks?
I'll look at this.
Broken, but, uh, yeah, uh, pretty much test bits were done, um, these individual lots and determined that, um, the tech material, water table, it just wasn't feasible to cite any big old, uh, systems on it, um, and that is why it is, is being done this way. Because all this, the, the good suitable material is right there. This is all not suitable material for septic systems, that's why.
It also came, what was it, five, six years ago? The Board of Health started letting, letting them put these group-type systems in. The state started pushing it, and then the town Board of Health started allowing it. It's basically a Board of Health issue. They went, finally made it, all the houses will have their, an individual thousand gallon, fifteen-hundred gallon tank because they built one subdivision in this town that was direct feed from the houses to the system. And they ended up with a lot of blockage, mainly there were a lot of babies on the street. And so it started, it burned up all the pumps in the pumping system. So they found that they had to go back to a, a tank, so the solids fall to the tank, and now just the liquid is going into the system.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Ellen, Ellen Jelly, I'm a thirty-six harvest wood. When you said it wasn't feasible to have the, um, leaching fields, is it because the water table is too high?
I believe it was a combination, um, of the water table and just of the crack material that it is. Um, I, I do know I did look at that, I don't have that in front of the top of my head, but that, one of the requirements of the shared system was to show that you could potentially fit, um, systems on there and just based on that nature, um, it's simply, okay, you have a three or four bedroom, um, that equates to a, say, a fifteen-by-thirties, uh, footprint of the system and that's it. This doesn't, uh, take into account like grading wise, um, if you have a water table for, in a septic field, you have to be a certain amount of distance from the water table. Sometimes you might see mounded systems in people's yards, like if the water table is very high. So per the requirements, I believe, title five, I don't know what section is, but in order to like, get this granted, um, you have to do show that each lot you could potentially fit a conventional system and a reserve on there, and the Board of Health plans to demonstrate that just from a purely conventional, um, layout. So it was a combination, and I know it's, there's some burrage in our, our private narrative for the septic system and all this stuff. It does note, and I believe it was for the tech material there, um, that we just build extremely large systems and the water table is not there.
And I also want to just have it on record again, the house that is being built behind my house.
Yeah.
And the water that sits behind my house, it's still pretty high, um, that I'm very, very concerned about the water table from when, you know, big rains come and the water rises up behind my house and now there's nowhere else to have the water go. And you know it's going to go into there anyway. So I, I am concerned about the, that one house behind my house.
Your yard over here.
Exactly, and, and it will affect my yard, my basement, and my water table.
So, um, I kind of looked at topo from out here, but like, correct me if I'm wrong, it, this is generally the low point here, do your yards significantly slope up this way?
I don't, it doesn't significantly, no.
Not significantly, okay.
I mean, the, the, the water behind my house, I don't have a massive backyard either, and then you go back, how big is the backyard?
Um, it's probably no deeper than thirty feet from the house.
So then you go out and then slopes down into the water, but the water is still back there, even though we've had a dry spell, that water is still sitting there. And that, that when they build a house back there, that's going to affect that, the water in that area, that's going to come up higher.
I can tell you from a design perspective, um, and it's not shown on the, you're explaining, but what we typically do for our stormwater reports, um, like, okay, water falls here, it's going to go, water falls here, everything is going to be maintained. From our perspective, we know this is somewhat our drainage device somewhere, um, in this vicinity. Uh, assuming you have a roof that flows this way, a roof that pitches that way. Uh, so stormwater flows, okay, it's going to fall this way, anything from here is going to flow this way, anything from here is going to flow that way. So we, we look at the drainage patterns and we assess, okay, of this area, what's roadway, what's grass, what's woods? Um, and we put that into, um, in model, um, and it shows that based on what existing conditions were before all this stuff, X amount of, um, in, in this case, actually ended up looking at stormwater standards, uh, states that we have to be less than or equal to the rate, um, in pre-existing conditions. I also looked at the volume, um, that just makes more sense to me, you have five cubic feet of water going there, well, you want to make sure there's not, not five cubic feet going there. So I also created a table based on our analysis that showed of in proposed conditions that indeed the cubic feet of water going to this wetland area is less than what it is currently. Um, and that's based on what we have, based on the existing model and the proposed model based on drainage patterns. So again, this water, yes, it'll eventually probably go all this way, but right now it's doing something like this where any water is going this way, this water is going to be going that way first. Um, and that's based on how we all model it. Um, when we input these numbers into our, it's called hydroCAD, um, it, it tells us that, um, indeed, the cubic feet and the, um, the rate of water going to specific design points are less, and that's how that gets determined. So when you, in, um, theory like, you know, it, it should not, um, impact your house based on checking.
And. Um, Davis Jelly, thirty-six harvest wood. Uh, I, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not an engineer, um, but when you dig a foundation of the size of a house, and does that have the potential to raise the water table?
Uh, that I'm not a hundred percent sure of. It seems like, you know, like if you put something in, uh, something full of bathtub, clearly it's going to displace.
And where is that water going to go?
Clearly, in this kind of specific case, um, there, these aren't embedded in the, um, most of these, uh, I think the basement, the proposed basement is at sixty-three and a half. That's just about what the, um, ground elevation is, so this is about sunk in one foot into the, uh, ground. Most foundations you see are mostly like seven feet, um, seven feet a foot. So based, based on that, it, it should not have a, um, impact, um, the amount, the amount of fill being brought on. I, I cannot attest the fact that that would affect the groundwater table, not physically, um, just the analogy of, yeah, a physical bathtub. Um, I can understand if you, all these houses were sunk in, if you were cutting this road into the existing grade, you might have a bathtub. Yeah, I just, I wouldn't, I don't know the direct correlation, uh, if that would affect the groundwater table. I'm thinking, most of these, um, I think most of these houses here are all, the basement elevations are just like existing grade anyway, so you're not actually excavating into the ground for it.
And what is the topography of the back of that house? In other words, where did, what is the grade to that wetland area behind our house?
So these are like, so existing spot contours, probably in the sixty, it's about sixty-four, sixty-four and a half. Um, so the, the finished grade of the basement, these will both, mostly be walkouts because you're bringing in so much fill. So most of the fill is in the front yard and it slopes off right to the backyard, so these will all be walk, most of them will be walkouts in the back. So it'll be matching existing grade right with the backyards.
So the grading of the backyard is going to not slope down to the water, to the, the wetland area?
Um, it will, I mean, again, my engineering brain, it, it makes sense. Uh, I've seen plenty of houses that, you know, when topography dictates it, like, if, if you simply could envision, like, this road is being brought in a decent amount of fill. If none of these lots were created, you're looking at a road about this high and you have to have a slope like this. What's going to happen is you're going to bring dirt in like that, and then eventually, that's what this is showing, that it's grading down right to the back of the house to essentially match the existing grade, um, that's existing out there now. And this fifty-foot buffer is going to be the limit of work, um, for the entire project. So like, right at this proposed back of the house, um, it's, at least it's showing right now, um, that a homeowner, you know, would not come in, I can tell you more than that, would not come in and like, this finished grade at the road is sixty-eight, they are not going to have. not gonna have dirt at elevation sixty-eight back here, it just, if the site doesn't have necessity back, it's gonna be, it just necessitates a walkout kind of condition, where at the back of the house, it's gonna be the existing grade that's currently out there now, that I can tell you. I'll answer your question.
So how high does that make the road? We haven't seen a topography of that.
Uh, you know, so essentially, um, yeah, it's about, so the profile really encapsulates that. So this is the, uh, finished grade, the darker line here. Uh, the existing grade of, so the dotted line you see here is the, the center line, existing grade, so that's about somewhere here. So it's mostly like, all this is being brought in fill, um, all that area, this area is being brought in fill, um, and that's just the nature of the design itself, and that's kind of to the, um, comment that the...
Do you have an idea in feet above what the height is now?
Um...
That you could give us?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, for example, like, on this profile, we got, this is about six feet of fill here, um, the most. Yeah, it's about six, six and a half feet at the most.
So you could say the road's gonna be six and a half feet above where the grade is now?
Yeah, and, uh, I've, obviously seen the site, you know, it's not completely flat, you've got some mounds out there, um, but yeah, according to this plan, at, at some points, it, it will be, um, yeah.
So if, if the stream behind our house, say the house is a bit, and then the, the water behind our house starts to rise up even more, what recourse do we have at that point that our water table is going up?
It's a conservation issue. And I believe they've tabled any answers? Aren't you still waiting for their final?
Yeah, yeah, uh, yeah, I'll continue.
So I believe that's something you need to yell at them for.
The conservation?
Because a few years ago, that type of stuff was taken away from us.
Okay.
And at that time, we have subdivisions in this town where French drains were put, like the backyard properties, and that French drain would come down around and tie into the, the system in the front of the houses. We can't do that anymore, and this new water thing is under conservation. So that's something you gotta beat their heads to get an answer.
I would say, you, you request your question, don't, don't get physical. One sheet, seat two hundred.
Yes.
Lower left corner, we've got a note regarding about perpetuity ownership and so, that should be rewritten. You still need it as it affects the homeowners association, but, uh, I should, that note needs to be rewritten.
Yep.
Are there any further questions, concerns? Um, Chris, how long will it take you to, to make a few changes, and you probably hear from Pat on, on a couple of things?
Pat, regarding that conservation review, um, yeah, I, I spoke with him regarding these, just to make sure we're on the same page, that's the process, how it kinda works, um, we submitted these plans back on Wednesday or Thursday, I believe it was, and I was kinda corresponding with him real quick, like, he was looking at it quickly. Um, but I know Tim Hay requested us to continue it, 'cause we're, you know, working on a buffer restoration plan, um, as well as peer review comments, and speaking with Patrick, I believe he said, like, these comments are more involved than, like, his conservation review would be, um, but again, still waiting on that, so I, I'm anticipating that he doesn't have any more things that will just greatly change his layout, considering he's already seen it. Um, and I don't like, you know, from Nico's perspective, like, he's already viewed it, how can he have any additional comments that he just did not see? I don't know if that, what you're saying, is the stormwater is his burden, he wouldn't get that review. Um, so I don't anticipate many hopeful comment or comments coming out of that.
Okay, so, back to my original question, what date would you like to continue with?
Um, can we like add, add these as conditions of approval? 'Cause that's, you know, that's all...
Yeah, yeah, you come back in with the plan and everything.
Yeah, I know how it kinda works on your end, but like, hopefully to close, close it here and have these as conditions of approval, um, with, you know, addressing those comments, that's, you know, and my looking at, and Slope has been partial, you know, talked to, um...
Well, I'm just, just wondering, 'cause he's gotta be coming back, we hold it open, and then make sure everything is there, then we close it.
Yep, he wants to address these first. Okay?
Could you, uh...
When are you meeting with CONCOM?
Um, yeah, about the sixth. And that was kinda, I, I spoke with Tim, um, he said typically they don't like to close a public hearing until planning or approval. So that, luckily, it kinda got continued, 'cause I mean, I, you know, the whole goal was obviously, you know, close a public hearing, so...
But we don't like to close that hearing, to hear it everything from them.
No, I don't mean to say that.
Yeah, we, yeah, we...
That's what I figured.
That's one leads into the other.
I, that's what I figured.
It goes on first.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but get, get it in, it's only, it's a, it's some wording things, that we wanna see done, and at that point, so yeah, at the, at the next one, we'll be ready to, to do it, but we'd just like to see.
Yep, and my anticipation was, yeah, the fact of, for, you know, obviously, you know, conservation is a heavily weighted issue on this site, um, if, you know, you want to shift the road somewhere else, and what else can attack, you know, the conservation, so I, I don't see that happening.
You, you, they're, they're the ones that you, that have the buffer and everything, and you, and you stayed within it, so...
Yep, so that's...
Uh, so it's, that would kinda...
The twenty-first, I would think, because if they're meeting with the conservation the sixth, and conservation has any more questions, it wouldn't, for him to show up the next night for us, the seventh.
My anticipation was, um, we provided, the big things they had with our, yeah, with our right buffer restoration plan would be done, so Tim's gonna review that, um, and then just getting a peer review comments back, so, which we haven't, you know, I don't know if that's reaching Patrick or what.
When have we got the twenty for us?
Nothing.
Nothing with twenty-first?
No, we have two on the seventh public hearing.
I mean, the seventh doesn't seem feasible, if they're only meeting with conservation on the sixth.
Yeah, but, uh, I, I think if, if, if it has all these done, we're ready to...
I'm anticipating, hopefully, you know, like, conservation will be able, you know, even provide comments on the restoration plan, but any comments that, and this is why it's always confusing, 'cause, you know, hey, if he obviously wants to adjust any comments that, um, for conservation and all this stuff, that may impact here.
I, I think we can do it on the seventh, 'cause we'll, we'll have a chance to review it, and it's almost gonna be bang, 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 close it here, take a vote, and, uh, and we, and we can condition it if, if conservation is still hanging, we can condition it on that. The only thing with the seventh, I believe we have, we have a couple of special hearing, and so a continued special hearing is going to be after the ones that have advertised it, 'cause they're coming, that's their first time in, so they'll be on at seven-thirty, so they, they will be on later, so if...
At eight-thirty.
It probably won't be till about this time that they'll be...
Some also have a second time on vacation, so, you guys do a Zoom as well? Oh, yeah, I'm gonna be coordinating with, um, some members of the scene, kind of in my office, and then...
As long as we, we have it beforehand.
Yep.
We'll take it, as soon as, as soon as you can get them to us, we'll take a, take a review. Uh, one of the things, we might wanna check with Pat for the, uh, the language on the soil, to make sure that we, we have the right wording, wording for that, we can, we can probably have it all reviewed before...
Soil being what? The soil being what?
The wording.
For like testing?
Yeah, it's testing, what it...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it just, the, the word, or just to say we're gonna have a soil test, it doesn't mean we want the specifics, it's, it's, it's so that...
Well, it could, it is spelled out for compaction.
Yeah, no, but something he's happy with.
Yeah, but conservation, isn't that conservation just changed what they want useful soils? They wanna get away from that ground up blacktop stuff, don't they? I don't know. I could say I saw something at one of their meetings, that's the...
Yeah, that's one of the things why we wanna get it, run it by him, because the things, things change, we wanna make sure we got the current rendition. Um, so it's, as far as if you wanna come, it will be a while, in fact, if, if you want, check with us just before, just in case we had something that gets canceled, 'cause sometimes at the last minute, they don't, can give you a heads up, but if you wanna be here. Ben, this, this isn't on live, this doesn't get played live, online, does it?
No.
'Cause the selectmen does sometimes, so...
Yes, they do.
We don't, okay. I was just gonna say, you could sit home and watch it, then all of a sudden, 'cause you've lived, you all live so close, and, you know, you can walk here in five minutes. Okay, but, uh, so we'll entertain a motion or a request, you've gotta, if you would please, Chris, uh, request us to continue the public hearing to...
On the sixth.
Or the seventh.
Seventh, yes.
Wednesday, the seventh, and, um, and it will be, it will be sometime after those other public hearings. Okay, so, we have a motion, I mean, we, a motion to accept, could you put it in writing for us, please?
Yep.
So we will, uh...
So moved.
You have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote your name as...
Are we gonna need him to bring in the estimates of costs and everything at that meeting? That would be the meeting before we sign?
No, that'll be for the surety.
The surety and stuff, that, that needs to be for what meeting?
He, he, we will, okay, probably should have really, we will close the public hearing, we will vote and put together the conditions. That will then be notified, it's a, it's a, it's a form out of our regulations, we then file that with the town clerk. The town clerk, after twenty days, it's a twenty-day appeal period, she will sign it that no appeal has been filed, or if appeal has been filed, she'll, she'll tell us, and that, that's another whole, whole ballgame, that's, that's, I don't wanna get into that, but it'll come back, we will then, uh, make sure that all the money's owed to the town, everything is, is taken care of, we will then endorse the plans, uh, the proponent can then record the plans, and at that point, he can go hire, uh, a contractor to actually build it, and he will build it, we will be inspecting it, Mr. Brennan will be, it's like he will be inspecting it, Mr. Hay will be for the CONCOM, will be inspecting it also, and at such time as he gets the, the basic road in, the binder course down, so you have a blacktop pavement, not the finish, which is the first one, all the utilities in, the electricity's in, the water's in, drainage is in, and the septic system is in a functioning manner, at that point, he comes to us and we, we establish a surety in that one, because you don't finish all the road because you have construction equipment, you don't, you don't finish the landscaping on the side of the road because you have, so it, it takes the time. He will have to put up a certain amount of money that will cover that, that to be done, and as he does it, like, when he says that's the landscaping, he can draw down some of his money, and he does the other, and then at the end, there'll be a certain amount left that when everything is all taken care of, we will, uh, then sign off of it, and, but in the, in the meantime, when he, when he, I, I jumped the gun, when he has the, all the utilities in, he can get releases, he can get lot releases, and at the time of the lot release, that's when we come up with the money.
Yeah.
That's, that's when we establish it, at the time of the lot release, then they can build houses, and when they, everything is all done, then he comes in with the, as-built acceptance plan that we were talking about earlier, he comes in with that, we have another public hearing, and, uh, we will decide to accept it, and if we accept it, we will return the remaining surety money to Mr. Peters, and then we will send it up to the, the selectman, who will also decide if, to put it on the form for the town meeting, and then at the next town meeting, it would be accepted. That kinda runs the whole, the whole, the whole thing down, but I couldn't just answer the middle question, I kinda had to, had to lay it out for, for what the reason would be, and, um, also, it's a twenty-year, twenty-day, uh, appeal period, which I will probably mention when we do vote to take it, because I'm supposed to tell the people about it, but you've already heard it, so, uh, I'll take it from you. But that is pretty much the, uh, procedure, that was, how it is all around, that's all. Any further questions?
That question, you said on, was it the note on C two hundred thing, wasn't it?
Yeah.
You said C two hundred, I think that's one of the last ones you said.
Who's take the break?
Yeah, and you gotta come up with some wording, then, come up with it, new word, wording, just know right here.
Sheet number?
C two hundred.
What's it for?
Lower left-hand corner.
Yeah, it didn't say perpetuity, did it?
No, but it implies it will retain ownership. We, we don't want it to retain, we want them to have... But with that, uh, when you come up, come up with that, email it before you put it on the final plans, and we'll, we'll discuss it.
So you, but I don't want it to...
You would not accept the sewer?
No, the, the sewer, the sewer has to be the homeowners' association, and all of the, uh, infrastructure is all their, their homeowners' association, and the town is going to, until such time as the road is accepted, the town is going to have to have an easement, uh, if, uh, no, not an easement, but, uh, no, they won't because of being a...
No, they don't, they don't flow it.
No, 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 I was, I was thinking with the interest, the septic, but the, the septic system is, is, is homeowners', and it may be, I don't know whether you have any other common areas, it's, you've gotta come in with a, a maintenance for the, uh, for the area, it's going to have to have a landscape, uh, in fact, I'm sure, uh, the tree warden is gonna be interested in the, in the landscape and around, around that, that'll be, and that'll be the, the responsibility of the homeowners' association. But we, we need, we kinda need to see that wording too, just to make sure it's, it's all...
Working regarding, yeah.
Home, homeowners' association.
Can you just want an email saying requesting to continue?
They actually fell over to four, that if, if you just, Jack or you want to sign it before you leave.
Okay.
That's fortunate.
Okay, that's even, okay, with that being said, we'll, uh, we will close this hearing.
I don't think that a vote was taken on the continuance.
Yeah, I think we, we did, but it's, no, we, we accepted his, uh, his request to do it, yeah, and, and now I'll take a, a vote to adjourn this meeting till the continued meeting. I'll maintain a motion?
Some more.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous is four present. Thank you.